We'll call this meeting to an order at 7:02 PM. Thank you everybody for being here. We'll do a roll call of our board here. All seven board members are present. Our student representatives, we have Lexi Thor from Bear Creek, Margaret Machado from Tokay, and Celine Wong from Middle College. I'm going to request Lexi to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I plead to the leaders. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are reporting on actions from closed session. Conference with legal counsel. Existing litigation case SPE 2025-01. Ms. McFarland motion, Mr. Navas II. The board approves case SPE 2025-01 by the following vote of 7-0. Personnel matter, public employee appointments. Mr. Navas motion and Ms. Stroh's second. The board approves the placement of Brittany Arnett as Director of Communications. Effective date to be determined by the following vote of 7 i's 0 n's. Ms. McFarland motion and Mr. Navas second. And the board approves the placement of Marina Berry as Elementary Principal. Location to be determined, effective 2025-26 school year by the following vote of 7-0. Mr. Stroh motion and Ms. McFarland second. And the board approves the placement of Nancy Johnson as Elementary Principal. Location to be determined, effective 2025-26 school year by the following vote of 7-0. Mr. Stroh motion and Mr. Navas second. And the board approves the placement of Jennifer Becerra as the Elementary Vice Principal. Location to be determined, effective 2025-26 school year by the following vote of 7-0. Ms. Alexander motion and Mr. Stroh second. And the board approves the placement of Rachel Castagna as Elementary Vice Principal. Location to be determined, effective 2025-26 school year by the following vote of 7-0. Ms. McFarland motion and Mr. Porter second. And the board approves the placement of Lali Sedona Jimenez as the Elementary Vice Principal. Location to be determined, effective 2025-26 school year by the following vote of 7-0. Mr. Porter motion and Ms. Alexander second. And the board approves the placement of Christopher Harold Waters as the Middle School Principal. Location to be determined, effective 2025-26 school year by the following vote of 7-0. That was a lot in closed session, thank you. I appreciate the board's patience through the whole process. Alright, as we can all look around, this is an exciting board meeting. We have tons of recognitions that we plan on doing. We have student recognitions, and if I can request Mr. Dawson and Mr. Lambert to please lead that.
Good evening, Board President Dr. Ball, Members of the Board, Superintendent Young. It's our pleasure to allow our principals to come and introduce their students that are being recognized tonight. And we would just simply ask that for our parents, we do have a very crowded boardroom. We would ask that our parents with our elementary students, we will honor our elementary students first. And then we will go outside and take pictures on the outside. And then if you can please make room for the middle school parents to come in, and then finally the high school parents. Thank you very much, Mr. Dawson will introduce our first group.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert, Board President Dr. Ball, Members of the Board, Superintendent Young. Thank you for giving us this opportunity. Thank you for all of our parents of our students who have been honored for being here. And this time, I would like to bring up Ms. Michelle Brown, Principal of John Muir Elementary School.
Good evening, Boards, Directors, Superintendent. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to have these students recognized. And teachers, thank you also for giving the students the opportunity to be here. So I have some students who have done some amazing things. And the first person I would like to recognize is Grayson Abong. He was part of the 15th Annual Math Olympiad that the GATE program put on. And he actually was second place out of all those students. So way to go, Grayson. And this is Fern Stahl Schmidt, who was part of the Invention Convention for this state. And she made something called Plant H2O. And she received a merit award at the state convention. That may not be what it is, but that's what's on the paper, so I called it. The Power Pack, that's with the dog. I remember the dog coming on campus, yes. Thank you, Fern Stahl Schmidt. Alyssa Flores Hermio. Well, she went to the state convention, and she has been able to go to the national convention in Michigan. And she did, I hope this is right, hook and slide. Yes, so she's going to be representing not only John Muir, but Lodi Unified at the state convention in Michigan.
Next, we'd like to have Principal Sarah Santana from Larson Elementary.
Good evening, Superintendent Young, Members of the Board. First, I want to thank our hardworking Larson teachers who served as math and science Olympiad coaches this year. All their hard work and time really paid off with our teams this year. And I want to start by recognizing the students who received third place in Science Olympiad for color wheel, Gwendolyn Sell, and Hector Lopez. Team Violet, second place. Noble Anuwarra, Gwendolyn Sell, Shane Simons, Logan Lau, and Chloe Chow. Third place, Science Olympiad name that scientist, Sarah Wold and Adam Miladinevich. Science Olympiad Water Rockets, Adam Miladinevich, Grant Miladinevich, and Griffin Zenin. Science Olympiad, Bridgeroni, Sarah Wold, and Cooper Vacarez, second place. Third place, Science Olympiad, Fossils, Hector Lopez, and Shane Simons. And Science Olympiad, second place for Mystery Architecture, Jackson Russell, and Gwendolyn Sell.
Thank you. I'd like to bring up Mr. Tim Shepherd, Principal of Manaleo Silva Elementary School. Yeah, good evening, Superintendent Young and Members of the Board.
The first person I want to introduce is Julie Wallace. She has been the head of our Math Olympiad forever. Eight years. And so she does an amazing job. And to show just how amazing, I want to introduce the first place team in the Math Olympiad. And we have Kayden Home. This is, Kayden was also, there you go. Let them look at you. Look upon your greatness. Kayden was the first place student in the Math Olympiad, and not just this year, but last year. And the year before. And the year before. In fact, I was watching him. And when everyone was feverishly working and working out the problems, he was drawing pictures because he was done. So congratulations, you did a great job. The rest of the team that backed him, and I told them all if they didn't get first place, they would all be suspended, so they did. No, they got first place, so lucky them. Aria Singh. Min. Michelle Agba. And Tran Parkish. Thank you guys for letting us come today and just celebrate our Olympic.
Next, we would ask if Ms. Principal Julie Vaz would come up. And we would like to recognize our students from Reese Elementary.
Good evening, Dr. Ball, Members of the Board, and Mr. Young. We are so proud of our Reese Roadrunners. They rocked it in the Math Olympiad, Science Olympiad, and the Intervention Convention. So starting with Mrs. Nichol, she is our fifth grade teacher. She is the one that has led all three of these competitions over at Reese Elementary for years upon years upon years. So we celebrate her tonight along with these Reese students. Let's start with our Math Olympiad first. We have Connie Howland, who took third place. So Connie, would you like to say that? Then we move over to our Science Olympiad. And they won during the ice competition. So we have Dylan Garcia, and we have Mason London. And then the last one, our little inventors over here. Out of 37,000 students that competed in K-12, they earned the merit award for, what do we call it, ladies? The H2O. The Plant H2O, I keep getting it backwards. So it's if you're short or you're tall, you wear that on your hat, and you give it a little squeeze, and you're able to water your plants that you can't reach. So they did a great job with that. We have, we have Addie, and we have Gwen. So give them a big hand. For allowing us the opportunity to celebrate our Roadrunners.
And our final group from our elementary segment, we would like to welcome up Principal Ben Cove and the Vine Wood Elementary students.
Good evening, Dr. Ball, Members of the Board, Superintendent Mr. Young. I'm Ben Cove, Principal here at Vine Wood. And I'm thankful for this opportunity to recognize our outstanding mathematicians at Vine Wood. We have our red team who finished third in the Lodi Unified Math Olympiad competition. First, we have Sarah Trong. Let's give her a hand if you can. Next up, we have Kayla Tettford. And Drew Dofonzo. We have two members who couldn't be here today, Brendan Dodson and Mia Corona. So let's give them a hand, please. Give a special thanks to our two coaches. They're not here with me today, but our third grade teacher, Mrs. Pilcher, and fifth grade teacher, Ms. Saweet. Thank you for all their hard work. Good job, mistakes.
At this time, we would like to thank our elementary parents for being here and ask you to exit and take pictures with your students so that we can make some room for our middle school folks to come in. Thank you. Okay, so it was my pleasure to introduce Mr. Matt Huris, Principal of Elkhorn School.
President Ball, Members of the Board, Superintendent Young, Matt Huris, Principal of Elkhorn School. As many of you know, I also oversee the GATE program. So I'd love to start out by giving a shout out to Dr. Adrian Go Miller and Tammy Alexander, who are two very amazing people. Does it always cut out on me because they know I don't need it? Both Dr. Go Miller and Mrs. Alexander were instrumental in bringing the math tournament as well as the Invention Convention. So I appreciate them, as well as all the amazing teachers that made the math tournament and the Invention Convention happen. So can we give them all a round of applause? Here with me are several of our amazing students from Elkhorn School, representing our Science Olympiad and Invention Convention. Our elementary Science Olympiad is run by our fourth grade teacher, Mrs. Rachel. our fourth grade teacher, Mrs. Rachel Gregor, Ms. Rachel Gregor, excuse me, and two parents, my goodness, Lolita Kwashnik, and, why am I spacing? Tina McLemus, sorry, I should have written it down. Usually I'm better with this. And our two parents that oversee our Science Olympiad for middle school are here tonight, Mrs. Sunny Samra and Mrs. Casey Avalos from Middle College High Schools. Can we give them all a round of applause? So starting down at that end, we have Ally Welch, who got third place in Crime Busters for Science Olympiad. Her partner, Amrit Samra, also third place for Crime Busters. Next to them, we have Quan No for third place in Helicopter. And his partner, Simran Samra, for third place with Helicopter. We have Asha Verk, second place for Potions and Poisons. And Daniel Gritty-Pat for Potions and Poison, second place. Third place for Rhodes Scholar, Cody Ray. And her partner for Rhodes Scholar, third place, Darren Moll. And we're kicking it back to Daniel Gritty-Pat for Wind Power, third place. His partner, Veer Bhajwa, could not be here tonight. Moving on, we have two of our elementary Science Olympians. For Save the Ice, second place, Simran Pandar. And Annika Kahler, directly behind me. For Air Trajectory, third place, Olivia Lee. And taking it back in line to her partner for Air Trajectory, Simran Samra. And yet again, for Micro emission, third place, Daniel Gritty-Pat. And his partner, Veer Bhajwa. And we have one of our smallest Elkhorn Wildcats, who received the State Invention Convention California State Award Scholarship Educational Technology for his Smart Binder. And how much money did you win, Reed? He won $200. So thank you so much for recognizing us tonight.
And finally, for our middle schools, we'd like to invite up our Millswood team, led by Vice Principal, Mr. David Hodge.
Good evening, good evening, members of the board and Superintendent Young. My name is David Hodge. I am the Vice Principal of Millswood Middle School. I'm also accompanied by Mr. Scott Heinrich, who is somewhere over there. That was right behind me. Thank you. And he actually served as a coach for our following awards that he has tonight. The following students received a first and third award at the Mechanical Engineering Science Achievement Competition. The Cargo Glider, Susanna Rocha, Holden Winterhalter. The Machine category, Abjat Singh, Susanna Rocha, Jack Fry. Math Breakout Room, eighth grade, Kitty LaStrange and Reese Quomet. They are not here tonight, but deserve a hand. Math Breakout Room, seventh grade, Silas Tomek, Mark Ry. Laquizvo, Kitty LaStrange, Silas Tomek, Susanna Rocha, Justin Dodson. And thank you for recognizing our outstanding science students and teachers.
Thank you, Millswood team. Again, I want to give everybody an opportunity to clear out, to take pictures if you're with a middle schooler, and then allow some of our high school parents to come in. And while we're doing that, I want to introduce Ms. Julie Hummel, Principal of Bear Creek High School.
Thank you, Dr. Ball, and members of the board. Again, I'm Julie Hummel, Principal of Bear Creek High School. And I'm very happy to introduce our fabulous FFA group here. Ms. Fatima Castellanos is one of our teachers here to represent us. And then we have Alexandria Lowry and Josh McGuire. They placed third place in the speaking contest at the Motherlode Sectional. Josh McGuire, again, placed third place in the individual speaking contest, and second place in the Winter State Finals Contest for the Fruit True Pruning. Water Quality at the Motherlode Sectional Contest. We had first place, that was Brooklyn Matthews, Jaleel Harrell, and Joshua McGuire. Thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to celebrate you tonight.
Next, we would like to have Dr. Jesus Marone, Principal at Lodi High.
Good evening, Board President, Dr. Ball, and Board Superintendent Young. It is an honor to be here tonight to present to you some of our stellar students from our Science Olympiad. Unfortunately, we do have some students that were unable to be here because of other events. However, we'll recognize them as well. Mr. Javin Nilo, who won third place for the Electric Vehicle Science Olympiad. Henry Caldwell, third place Electric Vehicle Science Olympiad. Nathan Lyon, third place Experimental Design Science Olympiad. Sally Solid, third place Experimental Design Science Olympiad. Mia Mayo, third place Experimental Design Science Olympiad. Liam Chetley, second place Geological Mapping Science Olympiad. Emiliano Espino, second place Geological Mapping Science Olympiad. Javin Nilo, third place Geological Mapping Science Olympiad. Leslie Numesio, third place Geological Mapping Science Olympiad. Nathan Lyon, third place Optic Science Olympiad. Sally Solid, third place Optic Science Olympiad. Sally Solid, third place Tower Science Olympiad. Nathan Lyon, third place Tower Science Olympiad. Bruce Bates, first place Wind Power Science Olympiad. Isaac Ortiz Ruiz, first place Wind Power Science Olympiad. Mia Mayu, second place Ride It, Do It Science Olympiad. Sally Solid, second place Ride It, Do It Science Olympiad. These are our recognizing students for our Science Olympiad program. Thank you. Thank you. Up next, we have our students from our FFA program. First up, we have Andrew Logan, who placed second place Regional Winner at California State FFA Conference in Agriculture Mechanics Design Fabrication Competition. Logan also placed second place Regional Winner for Diversified Livestock Proficiency Entrepreneurship, second place Regional Sectional Winner for Beef Production Proficiency Entrepreneurship, third place FFA Welding Team Sanger High School Contest. Last but not least, first place FFA Welding Team Clovis East Contest. Zach Grove, second place FFA Welding Team Buick College. Zach Copeland, second place FFA Welding Team Buick College. Zach Copeland, second place FFA Welding Team Buick College. Charles Spurgeon, second place FFA Welding Team Buick College. Alexa Thorns and Haley Smith, both placed second place FFA Welding Team Fresno City College for Women's Welding Contest. And last, but not least, Jose Morales, second place FFA Turf Management Entrepreneurship Sectional Winner. And let's complete all our students here being recognized for their accomplishments. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And I'd like to introduce Mr. Nicole Vertar, Principal from McNair High School.
Good evening, President, Dr. Ball, members of the board and Superintendent Young. I am Nicole Vertar, the Principal of Ronald E. McNair High School. And tonight, we are recognizing students from two different organizations on campus. First, for our Culinary Arts, we have Ronald Orani, who earned third place. And Taylin Tith, who earned first place in the FCCLA Regional Competition for Culinary Arts, and just last week, first place in the state. The next group of students we would like to recognize tonight is our Mesa Club, with one of our advisors, Ms. Aracilla Ramirez. First place in the Coding Solutions Experience was Valjot Ball and Alan Vang. First place for Coding Solutions Novice, Crystal Thatch. Third place for Engineering Design Challenge, Ives Fabro, Sofia Ruffuerzo, and Rosalyn Young. First place for Machine Innovative Design, Jacob Barquez, Ethan Sore, and Ives Fabro. First place for Mesa Machine, Lilian Leo Lu, Crystal Thatch, and Dinah Lee. And then second place for the Moon Base and Moon Base Innovative Design, Keenan Kim Hui, and Aseem Rafi. I would like to thank you for inviting our students here to be recognized this evening. And I would also like to thank our school board and our superintendent for your continued support for our students and the programs that enrich their educational experience.
Thank you. And I'd like to bring up Ms. Vanessa Hara, Principal from Middle College High School.
Good evening. This evening, we have our Academ team, a little bit larger than this, but we do have two representatives with us. So our team, small but mighty, was able to bring home first place in the 45th Annual Academic Decathlon in Super Quiz for Division Four. So tonight, we have here Hafsa Hina and Malan Tran to represent some of their teams. Additionally, Hafsa Hina did get two individual medals, placing third place in the individual medals for music, and then also first place for science. We did have a number of other students placed, but they unfortunately were not able to make it. But we did get individual medals for third place in art. Another student also third place in art, first place in art, second place varsity art, third place literature, second place math, third place music, second place music, third place music in scholastics. So we're very proud of our Academic Decathlon team. So thank you for that.
Now we have our final group. I'd like to invite up Principal Enrique Avalos, Tokay High School. And I think he brought all of the students from Tokay with him.
Good evening, thank you. I'm just gonna go ahead and dive right in. So, third place in Ag Creed Speaking of Ag Sections, I have Leslie Silva. First place Ag Place Cooperative Marketing in Section, Luis Toral. First place Ag Sales Proficiency in Section, Region, and State, Annabelle Quintana. Second place Ag Spanish Creed in Sections, Camila Malonado. Third place for the same, Santi Madrigal. First place Ag Water Issues in Section, Chloe Alves. First place Ag Welding Contest Section for Ag Mechanics and Repair Proficiency Individual, Jacob Freeman. Second place California FFA Scholarship Winner, Prepared Public Speaking in Sections Qualified for Regions, Adrian Mendoza. Third place Extempur Speaking at Section Qualified for Regions, Isaiah Perez. First place for same, Mariana Soler. For FFA Best in Form Green Hand Contest for Freshmen in Sections, first place was Aubrey Leonard. Second place, Camila Malonado. Third place, Leah Toral. Third place, Leslie Silva and Leslie Carlson. First place team for four cultural judge, first high team in Gridly Field Day. I'm gonna read all the names at once. Mia Penner, Enzo Navarro, Michaela McKnight, and Annabelle Quintana. Second place team for Fruit Team Pruning, at State Champion. Second place team for Fruit Team Pruning at State Champions Fresno State, Naomi Ganoa, Adrian Mendoza, Luis Toral, and Chloe Alves. Third place for Gridley Floral Contest, Enzo Navarro. Third place for Individual Chi Pruning State Finals, Naomi Gano. Actually, I'm gonna take a break from my wonderful FFA and my coaches, Becky Freeman, Nolan McEwen, and Celeste Castillo, because, well, let's give a hand to these wonderful. Okay. Yeah, let's go ahead and get this group up and then I'll run up. Thank you. And then up here, as you know, we have a very, very awesome band that's won hundreds of trophies in the last few years. And this is our Drum Major, Joyce Kirkendall, who this year, her senior year, is the NCBA Royal Regiment Band State Regional Drum Major and the Northern California Band Association Winter Drum Line, first place. And I have one more team for FFA here. There's come some of the back team, so we'll come back to them. A team, Region College FFA Contest Grapevine Pruning Team, second place, it's Mia Peña, Angel Tapia, Isaiah Perez, Abraham Lopez Chavez, Nathan Black, and Emmanuel Mendez. And now, my wonderful Science Olympia team. First by Dr. Kiana Cox. Thank you so much, Dr. Cox. I hope someday you get to pass on this mantle. She hasn't had a student with us in a minute, but she is so wonderful as to help out. So, I'm gonna go ahead and read these out. Science Olympia Region Competition Air Trajectory, second place, Sean Spencer and Scott Spencer. Third place team for same, Eden Secha and Simon Colbert. For the Regional Competition Anatomy, first place team Alexis Esparza and Sean Spencer. Bungee Drop, first place team Bonnie Brar and Preet Dilan. Second place for Bungee Drop, Team Veer Brar and Cyrus Medina. Chemistry Lab Team Alexis Esparza and Evan Neves. Disease Detectives, two teams, third place Miranda Toon and Avram Para. Second place Erin Para and Emily Lynn. Dynamic Planet, third place, Cara Lee and Indrajeet Samra. Electric Vehicle, second place, Evan Neves and Arjun Burt. Forensics, second place team Naveen Pandir and Parv Patel. Fossil, second place team Sean Spencer and Arjun Burt. Helicopter Teams, third place Nathan Ripken and Avram Para. Second place Erin Para and Conrad Gonzalez. Material Science, second place team Sean Spencer and Erin Para. Microobmission, first place team Alexis Esparza and Emily Lynn. Optics Team, second place Cara Lee and Avram Para. For the County Science Olympia Regional Competition Toke Purple Team, Alex Alexis Esparza, Evan Neves, Sean Spencer, Barry Brier, Liliana Mejia, Kate Lee, Scott Spencer, Ally Grant, Erin Para, Arjun Burt, Conrad Gonzalez, Devang Rajput, Emily Lynn, and Preet Dilan. World Tour, first place Evan Neves, Devang Rajput. Green Power, second place Oliver Leskey and Cyrus Medina. Dynamic Planet, first place Alexis Esparza and Kate Lee. Right Do It, third place Simon Colbert and Nathan Ripken. All right, thank you, Science Olympia. This next young lady made state for wrestling with her coach, Coach Bozo. Took second place Kaene Tuval. She is a wonderful young lady. You can see she's very well decorated. She has gone multiple times to League Champions and, yes. And my last group of wonderful FFA students, as you know my flagship program, Spanish Creed. Spanish Creed at Sections, first place Elisa Mejia Hernandez. Grapevine Pruning Contest in Sections, third place Nathan Black. World Cup Grapevine Pruning Team, second place Mia Peña, Angel Tapia, Isaiah Perez, Abraham Lopez Chavez, Nathan Black, and Emmanuel Mendez. Additionally, Azalia Sanchez and Yaslin Verella. Veterinary Science CDE Denim By Contest, third place team Gabby Seis, Mariana Soler, Emmanuel Mendez, and Chloe Alves. Ag Welding Golden State Field Day, third place Jacob Freeman, Elias Hensel, Chase Fiore. May State Field Day, first place individual Jacob Freeman. Who also took third place at the individual at the Clovis Field Day.
Thank you, Mr. Avalos. Thank you to our Board of Education for giving us the opportunity to recognize our students. Thank you to our Principals and Coaches who showed up and our Parents. We really appreciate it. We appreciate your support. And thank you all.
Thank you so much. I just have to say greatness lives amongst us. This proves it. We have the best kids around. Thank you. We are going to move on to our wonderful student representatives. They have done such a great job over the last year representing their schools and their fellow students. We have recognition for our student representatives, for Lexi Thor, Margaret Pachero, and Celine Monk.
So, we're coming to an end of the time we've had together. And I just have to say, as the Superintendent who has the joy of getting to know each of you, seeing your amazing leadership skills, and watching each of you gain confidence, having to talk into the microphone, and sharing your exuberance for each of your schools, I am gonna say, and I know the Board feels this way too, that we are going to miss each of you and what you bring to our Board meetings, the joy of hearing about the amazing things happening at your school. And as a parting gift to each of you, you get to take the amazingly large poster of yourself plastered on your living room wall for all to see in your family. And on behalf of the Board, each of you will also get a gift card at Dutch Bros, because it's warming up and there's plenty of sugary goodness at Dutch Bros. So, I just wanna say, you will be missed, because this is your last Board meeting where we get to hear from each of you. So, sad to see you go, but I'm excited for your futures.
That's a great bonus to take their name. Thank you, Mr. Young. Thank you, kids. You feel like many adults, though. You always be us kids. And thank you for being so amazing. You did a great job. We have a spotlight as well tonight. Mr. Lambert is gonna present Unified Basketball.
Yes. Thank you, Dr. Ball, President Dr. Ball, members of the Board, Superintendent Young. It's our honor to again recognize some of our incredible students. I would like to introduce our District Athletic Director, Ms. Erin Aiken.
President Ball, members of the Board, and Superintendent Young, the California Inters classic Federation proudly promotes a mission to ensure that all students can belong, connect, and compete. That mission comes to life here in Loda Unified School District through our Unified Basketball League, a program that redefines what it means to be part of a team. Tonight, I'm honored to spotlight a program that has not only brought us joy to our high school campuses, but is transforming our campuses by promoting true inclusion and student leadership. In 2018, driven by a deep passion for both athletics and serving students with disabilities, I had the privilege of partnering with our incredible adaptive PE specialists to launch the LUSD Unified Basketball League. Our goal from the beginning was simple, foster inclusion, camaraderie, and school spirit through the power of sport. Over the years, those goals have grown to include promoting positive peer relationships, building confidence in our athletes, and cultivating student leadership and empathy. Unified sports joins students with and without disabilities on the same team. Together, they train, compete, and build friendships by breaking down barriers through shared experiences and competition on the court. The Unified Basketball League is proudly composed of students from our moderate to severe programs at Bear Creek High School, Loda High School, and Toke High School. Each school competes against one another in a friendly league game, with the season culminating in a showcase event that celebrates the players and the incredible support that they receive from across their campuses. You see a video here. You'll feel to experience it. Hopefully, you guys come to the Colnease Showcase on May 15th, and it's amazing. I'm sure the girls can attest to the experience that they've gone to the games. Over the years, the league has grown in visibility, participation, and heart. Games are scheduled during lunch periods, transforming the campus into a vibrant arena of school pride and unity. This scheduling not only increases attendance, but allows our unified athletes to experience the thrill and energy of a true high school athletic event. The gym becomes a celebration with cheerleaders, bands, ASB leaders, and staff create an electric atmosphere. Our unified athletes feel the full support and spirit of their schools. The impact of the league is more than athletic event. It promotes inclusion and positive peer relationships, builds confidence and self-esteem in students with disabilities, strengthens campus culture and student leadership, and provides authentic opportunities for empathy and teamwork. We are proud of the community we've built. The heart of the Unified Basketball League lies in the dedication and teamwork of so many across our district. Our incredible adaptive PE specialist, John Grimm. Jonathan, who's unable to be here tonight. A special thank you to our APE Para Educator Shelby Dobler for her tireless support on and off the court, moderate to severe teachers and paraeducators, student volunteers and unified partners, ASB leaders, athletic directors, cheer teams, and band members, school administrators, and support staff, and of course, the students, our unified athletes, whose enthusiasm, sportsmanship, and joy define this league and inspire us all. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Erin, and thank you all for being here. I did have a quick question before you step out. For our adaptive coach.
Oh, sorry. Oh, yeah.
Yes, a quick question. Do we have tennis as an adaptive sport in our school district as well?
Not at the moment.
Okay, not at the moment. I just got curious, because someone asked me does Loda Unified have that? And USDA has only one changing rule to include the adaptive kids in tennis, so I'd love to see that. Thank you so much, and thank you for everything you're doing. All right, Ms. Alexander is ready. We have a proclamation for our Teachers Appreciation Week, May 5th to the 9th, 2025. And I'm requesting Sherri Alexander to present it to our school district and teachers. Thank you.
Before the Board of Education of the Loda Unified School District of the County of San Joaquin, State of California, proclamation for Teacher Appreciation Week, May 5th through the 9th, 2025. Whereas, the week of May 5th through the 9th, as a Teacher Appreciation Week in recognition of the dedicated professionals entrusted with fulfilling the mission of education to prepare our students for the future, and whereas teachers play a vital role in shaping the minds and futures of our youth, nurturing curiosity, resilience, and a lifelong love of learning, and whereas teachers have continued to adapt, innovate, and lead with compassion through ever-evolving challenges in education, and whereas the Board admires teachers who are continuous learners and add to their own education by completing advanced degrees, coursework, and professional development throughout their careers, and whereas the Board appreciates teachers who strive to create a learning community that facilitates each student's academic and social and emotional growth. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of Loda Unified School District hereby recognizes and honors the contributions of our educators and proclaims May 5th through 9th, 2025, as Teacher Appreciation Week in the Loda Unified School District. With thanks and appreciation, proclaim to the sixth day of May, Dr. Ball and the Loda Unified Board. Thank you. We honor you.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander. All right, we'll move on to comments from our student representatives. Lexi Thor.
President Dr. Ball, members of the Board, Superintendent Young, now that our hands are all red, I will share what Bear Creek has today. April was Child Abuse Awareness Month, and in honor, we teamed up with the Lisa Project to hold an audio tour for our freshmen to raise awareness on the situation and its importance. Our FCC LA team traveled to Riverside this weekend to participate in a competitive conference, and our band went to perform at Knoxbury Farm and at the recording studio at the Disney Imagination Campus. Our Division of Bay team just came back from the state tournament, and our junior Leila Shelton came back as a state champion. Leila plays first. Leila placed first overall in oratorical interpretation and is the best in the state. In conclusion, us Bruins just love Southern California. Our College and Career Center celebrated our seniors this last Thursday during both lunches in honor of Visiting Day. It was nice to see where everyone plans to be this fall and what careers they want to pursue. For athletics, as the year comes to an end, so do our sports. Our boys volleyball team made it to the second round of playoffs after winning against Kimpel at home. varsity softball finished first in league, and our baseball finished second and are on their way to playoffs tomorrow. Our boys tennis was third, and our golf team was second, and both teams played well in the playoffs. Girls swim finished first in league, and six of our swimmers made it to sectional finals and will be swimming in Elk Grove tomorrow, while our truck and field team competes in league meet. Girls badminton finished first with an undefeated season, and boys finished third. As for upcoming events, tomorrow is our senior awards night, where our qualified seniors will be recognized for all their hard work through these past four years. Included will be our Senior of the Year nominees Jeremiah Leme, Alana Yu, Matthew Romano, Hillary Say, Andrew Jaime, and Lexi Thor. Next week, next Friday, is our seniors' last academic school day, powder puff game, and goodbye rally. Our theme this year is Nickelodeon, to celebrate the old memories of our childhood. Our ASB Commissioners of Activities are highlighting some of our favorite TV shows, and the seniors get a chance to feel the Bruin pride and spirit one last time. Lastly, I would like to thank you all for an amazing year. It has been a true honor and humbling but prideful experience to be here representing my school to you all. I hope I did an okay job at setting the standard high for our next ASB president. Thank you.
Thank you, Lexi. I think you did great. Margaret?
Hi, Dr. Ball, members of the board, Superintendent Young. So it's okay, we had our multicultural fair last night, in which over eighty-five different countries were represented and shared our community. The event was mainly hosted by our Metta and Leo clubs. However, many others decided to participate and had a great part in helping this fun event come to life. I went yesterday, and it was actually the most fun I've had in so long. It's okay. I was able to, I was able to immerse myself in so many different cultures. I got Hannah Dunn. There were tattoos from Hawaii. It was so fun, so much different food. I literally was full by the end of it. It was amazing. So definitely recommend coming out to try it next year. For student government, our senior class held a senior movie night on the football field and watched the ultimate senior movie, Ferris Bueller's Day Off. Student government is also hosting a teacher-only raffle this week in honor of Teacher Appreciation Week, with prizes being gift cards and certificates from various stores around Lodi. We also made posters for each subject department and naming the teachers in recognition of them. For sports, our spring sports are officially coming to an end, as many of them have started to end, and many are continuing on past league tournaments. Our boys golf team did amazing this year, as they are champions of the SJAA tournament and have continued on to sections at the Tracy Golf and Country Club, which was today. I'd also like to recognize Ashlyn Doolan for having broken Tokay's women's record for the mile by attaining a five-minute and seven-second mile, which is three seconds faster than the previous record. Our baseball team were also SJAA champions and had a very successful season this year. For upcoming events, our prom is finally this weekend, which everyone is so happy about, especially me, and those who have been voted onto our prom court, which includes Sabrina Sanchez, Olivia Garcia, Ashlyn Doolan, Melody Cantiano, Jose Macias, Aquiles Gonzalez, Fahad Aklak, and Anthony Orozco. We are continuing on planning, we are continuing our planning to host a community car meet at Tokay next Friday, and we hope you'll be able to do it. Our final rally of the year is coming up on May 23rd, and we seniors are very excited about it, as it will be a senior-focused rally. The week of the rally, we will also be having our last spirit week of the year, which will consist of a fun variety of dress-up days. Thank you so much, and I've had the time of my life this year.
Thank you, Margaret. Celine?
Good evening, President Dr. Ball, Superintendent Young, members of the board, for the last time. Last Friday, PTSA, I'll try to keep this short and sweet. You guys have heard recognitions all night long. Last Friday, PTSA hosted a pool day for our students to celebrate the sunny weather, which all of our student body enjoy. To end off the final week of school, Riot Sports Club is hosting a volleyball tournament this Friday, and the senior class of 2025 will be having their senior sunset this Friday as well. I have some recognitions of my own. I want to congratulate Clara Brianda Larson and Omid Azadi for their wins at the 2025 Spring Art Show. Clara placed third in the 3D category, and Omid placed first in advanced drawing and was awarded both the Superintendent's Choice and Best of Show. Our Dragons always make us proud. As we wind down for the school year, clubs have picked out elected the board members, including our new senior government board. We are incredibly proud of all of our candidates, and I want to personally welcome Navkaran Sandhu and Akila Nuyen as our newest ASB president and vice presidents. You guys will be enjoying their presence next year. Thank you all so much for a wonderful year, and I know that you guys will all do fantastic things next year.
Thank you, Celine. Thank you all. I think you kids did amazing, and I'm sure the board concurs. We'll get to the comments in a minute. I think Ms. Navah has to comment. Sure, yeah, go ahead.
First graduation, the date is March, I mean, day sixteen? First one, Little College.
Do we have any other board members with words of encouragement?
Yeah, ladies, wonderful job. And it's not easy to talk in front of adults and so forth, but you were very poised and did an excellent endeavor with your schools and presenting them in a very positive light and bringing items to us that we didn't know about and wanted to be part of and so forth. Very proud of you. I wish you nothing but the best of life offers as you go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
I just wanted to thank you for the wonderful reports and sharing when you said it was the best year ever. That makes my heart warm. I wish you all the best. And please come back and keep us, or drop us a note or two, just letting us know how things are going for you, because I know your futures are very bright.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander. And we'll move on to our superintendents' report.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Ball, members of the board. Just a couple of things I want to bring your attention. I think tonight is a great example of the amazing things happening as our students partner with our teachers and volunteers and other staff to show off the amazing students that are represented throughout our district. And I think it's exciting news as we start looking to the future with the changes from a sixth to a seventh-period day. For example, already we're seeing that our Avid enrollment for next year is increasing from 779 to 950. Those are opportunities for our students. We're also, I'll just give you an update, that as of right now, as we were crunching the numbers, we have 679 A-3G completers in the district. We have 394 CTE completers, and that's a good baseline for us to see next year where that grows throughout the district. Also, in June of 2024, we had a total of 117 of our high school students enrolled in dual enrollment. This year, and we are just starting May, we already have 211 students who have signed up. I know in talking with our college and career team, they're actually increasing the number of classes available. And so between now and the start of summer session at Delta, I'm excited to see as more and more students take on these dual enrollment opportunities. I also had a great opportunity to participate in the State Seal of By Literacy Celebration. When I said yes to giving medals out to students, little did I know there'd be 350 of them. But I learned how to give out medals. But it was a great celebration, and I know people here in this room were part of it. And these are just examples of the amazing things happening in Lodi Unified. And that's a testimony to our teachers, it's a testament to the hard work of Evan Martinez, and everyone else who is ensuring our students are moving down those different roads with great opportunities. So the final thing I'd like to bring your attention, as it comes to, we always pay attention to our average daily attendance. For our general education, we're just under 93% right now. We are getting closer to where we were back, back when, before that thing we all had to deal with in 1920 and beyond. I know we have some more to do with SBC.
You mean 2020.
What I say. Well, I say the 1920 school year. I didn't know superintendents' reports were for heckling, but I will take it. I'm fine. I would also say that chronic absenteeism by year, and I'm sorry I said 1920, but looking at the 2021, 2022 school year, all the way up to our current school year, when we look at the district-wide, in 2021, 2022, we were at 38.57% chronic absenteeism. Right now, we are at 22%. When you look at the efforts of our child welfare and attendance and all those supporting our students, when we look at teachers, counselors, mental health clinicians, when we look at the efforts across this district, it is a great testimony to the hard work and dedication of everyone to ensure our students are in school, learning, and participating in the amazing things we have going on. So I'm going to leave it at that before I say something else that will get heckled. And I have nothing else to report.
Thank you so much. I am going to take a little detour from our board agenda. And do we still have Rachel Conroy in attendance? Yes, this young lady has something to say, and I'm going to open up the floor for you for three minutes to speak what you have to.
Hi, my name is Rachel Conroy, and I go to Middle College. I'm a current freshman. Recently, my physical, I mean, my PE teacher, Ashley Nichols, was given our updated individualized requirements to pass out of PE. Prior to this new information I was given just a few weeks ago, I was under the impression that I need to run a 10-minute mile time. I was determined to achieve this goal and had been very close in the past. I even started working out with my mom on the treadmill and bike at home in order to make it happen. Unfortunately, I was informed that in order to pass, I would have to run a 7-minute and 18-second mile due to my height and weight. All of my aspirations to pass pretty much went out the window. Having been given this new information, I felt that it was important to reach out and make all of you aware of just a few things. First, at the beginning of the academic school year, I was put on a new medication that caused me to gain over 40 pounds in just two months. I also was in physical therapy for a good portion of the year for my back and neck pain that I'm still experiencing, and had another doctor's appointment for today. Most likely, this new pain is associated with rapid weakening from circumstances beyond my control. I'm also in therapy, vitally, to talk to someone about my self-esteem issues that arise due to these circumstances. In spite of these obstacles, I've continued to work out with my mom at home a couple of times a week, and I'm trying my best in class to achieve this seemingly impossible task. I'm also trying to work with my therapist and allow my anxiety and fear of failing this class and having it affect my GPA takeover. I'm hoping that you will consider all of these factors and either excuse me from these requirements or change expectations so I'm not set up for failure in the way that I believe I currently am. I feel that it is unrealistic and honestly somewhat cruel to impose these impossible expectations on teen girls who are already experiencing body image issues. Like I am, the belief that someone who weighs more should run faster is backwards in my mind. I'm a 15-year-old girl with curves that I'm willing to embrace and love for my body, love my body for what it is. Being set up to believe that I'm not good enough because I can't run a 7-minute mile by an institution that is designed to foster learning and growth is just wrong, in my opinion. I am always willing to compromise and be flexible and open to solutions, but I believe that in this situation, it is Lodi Unified and California State regulations that may need to reevaluate the expectations they have on teen girls, and not only teen girls, like the students. The precedence that is being set by an arbitrary number that is based more on society than medical data is damaging not just to me, but to many of my classmates. I would like you to consider one last question. Is this new BMI requirement helpful or hurtful? In my opinion, it does far more damage than good. Thank you for hearing me out and taking my request into consideration.
I thank Rachel for coming, mustering the strength to come and talk to all of us on the podium. Thank you, Rachel. We are going back to our board agenda with public comments on Consent Agenda A. The public may address the board on Consent Agenda A routine business. Each public speaker shall limit comments to three minutes. Please say your first and last name before starting. These comments are for Pop Consent Agenda A, please. Seeing none.
Motion approved, accepted in Agenda A.
Thank you.
We didn't ask for it, but if we wanted to.
Oh, board report.
Do you want board comments?
Yes, please. Only comments.
We have a motion on the floor. I am rescinding the motion and opening up board comments. Thank you.
Which one are you pulling?
So looking at A4 on the portables and general, just general comments on all of the requests for architectural and these.
Would you like to pull any of the items?
Yeah, four through seven is a bulk, but more of it comment is noting just fire sprinkler upgrades are not included. And then...
So we'll pull items four to eight, and then we can vote on the rest and come back to those.
Four to seven. It was like four through seven.
Four to seven. So we're pulling items four to seven for Ms. Landerman's request, and I am looking for a motion for the rest.
Motion to approve the rest of Agenda A.
Can we have a student vote for it, please? Sorry, it can't be right now.
Aye.
Aye. Celine?
Aye.
Thank you. And board, board, please. Motion passes seven zero. We have item A4 to A7, Ms. Landerman.
Okay. And most of these, take the A4, for example, fire sprinklers not included with the service. Is there additional services that you guys will be making sure that there's fire sprinklers?
Of course. Those services are for the portables that have already been PC-approved through DSA. Include this contract for these architects are to marry the portable and the site work that will connect all the electricity, the plumbing, the utilities, fire sprinklers, et cetera. So yes, those portables will have fire sprinklers. They're required.
And then no water connection, so no sinks in the classrooms?
The site work contractor would be handling that.
Okay, so that would be an added cost in time?
Under the site work contract, yeah. That's just for the architects. There's multiple pieces to the project.
I think that covers like four through eight. It was more just getting clarification on, and most of them are the same.
Okay. So do I have a motion for A through seven, items A? Sorry, thank you. Items A4 through seven. Thank you. All right, Ms. Navah sent the motion. Do we have a second? And we'll take A, student vote.
Aye.
Thank you. And a board vote, please. Thank you. Motion passes seven zero. Oh, we have to go separate. Thank you. Thanks for pointing that out. So can we, do we have to repeat for each one?
No, I'm picking A4 right now.
Over A5? Okay, may I have a motion for A5, please? And student vote?
Aye.
And board vote, please? Item A5, motion passes seven zero.
Motion approved, A5.
Thank you. Can I have a student vote, please?
Aye.
And board vote? And board vote? Motion passes seven zero. Item A7.
Motion approved A7.
Turn around a second. Thank you. And student vote?
Aye.
And board vote, please. Thank you. Item A7, motion passes seven zero. Thank you, Michael and Mallory, for bringing that out. Appreciate it. We are going on to public comments on other action items. The public may address the board on other action items. Each public speaker shall limit the comments to three minutes.
Good evening, President Dr. Baugh, members of the board, Superintendent Young. I'd like to thank Ms. Church and her team for helping us address other action items, one through five. There are language on our collective bargaining that is gonna help both the district and us have a better relationship, understanding of what we should and not do. This will make a better work effort between both parties. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing now other public comments. I am moving over to item, other action item one, ratification of the memorandum of understanding with California School Employees Association, school closure due to state of emergency. Ms. Church?
Yes, Dr. Baugh, members of the board. Before you is a MOU with CSCA for school closure. It's recommended that you approve.
Do we have any student comments for this? Any board comments, please?
I move you approve.
Second.
Thank you. And take a student vote, please.
Aye.
And a board vote? To step down for a rest, please. Can we... I'm sorry, I didn't see any.
Because you have a quorum, if he is not present, you can do a verbal vote.
Sure. Let's go and do a verbal vote.
And then, you can say that he was unable to vote. He wasn't present. Yeah, or mark him absent for the vote, not absent from the meeting.
Thank you. All right. Can we have a verbal vote, please? Ms. Landerman?
Aye.
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 We have a motion passing for OAI1 at six ayes, one absent for this motion, and zero nays. Thank you. We're moving on to item OAI2, ratification of the tentative agreement with California School Employees Association, Article 7, hours and overtime, Ms. Church? I have to do my Roman numerals one more time on that one. Seven hours, is that what we're gonna say?
Article 7, so hours and overtime.
Thank you.
Dr. Baugh, members of the board, before you is the tentative agreement with CSCA. It is recommended for approval.
Thank you. Do we have any student comments? Any board comments, please?
I move.
We will take a verbal vote on this as well. Ms. Landerman?
Aye.
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 We have six ayes, one absent for this motion, and zero nays. Missed a student vote on this.
Aye.
Thank you. Item OAI3, ratification of the memorandum of understanding with California School Employees Association, pilot program, re-article 14, transfers, Ms. Church?
President Baugh, members of the board, before you is a pilot program with CSCA for transfers. It is recommended for approval.
Thank you. Student comments?
I move we approve.
Second.
No comments on this?
No comments.
All right. No board comment, freedom, Mr. Navas.
I move we approve.
We have a motion and a second, and if we can, please take a board vote verbally. We'll start with Mrs. Stone.
Aye.
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 Thank you. Motion passes six ayes, one absent for this motion, and zero nays. We are moving on to action OAI4, ratification of the memorandum of understanding with California School Employees Association, LDA, Principal Secretary to Position Reclassification. Ms. Church?
Before you is an MOU for reclassification for the Lincoln Technical Academy Principal Secretary 2. It's recommended for your approval.
Any student comments? Any board comments on this?
I move we approve.
I just wanted to comment, Mr. Navas. You're quick on your feet. Thank you. I do want to extend my gratitude to the district and to the CSCA Association for bringing this into fruition. I know this was something that everybody worked together to complete properly, and I really appreciate, and I do like the fact that CSCA is agreeable to everything with the reclassification that has been done. So, thank you for all your hard work and all of this. A motion, please.
I move we approve.
Thank you.
I'll second.
And student vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Can we take a board vote?
So, you can do digital.
Yeah, but direct it.
Thank you.
Voting police.
Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. Item OAI5, ratification of the memorandum of understanding with California School Employees Association, purchasing technician, Ms. Church?
Dr. Baugh, members of the board, the MOU presented for your approval.
Thank you. Any student comments? Board comments?
Move we approve.
Thank you. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
And student vote?
Aye.
And board vote, please. Thank you. Motion passes seven zero. Item OAI6, AB1200, documents for Lola Unified School District Employee Group Supervisor and Confidential, Ms. Juarez?
Good evening, President Baugh, members of the board, Superintendent Young. AB1200, this is a public disclosure of the collective bargaining agreement for Lola Unified Supervisory Group and Confidential Group following to this board item. These agreements have an estimated fiscal impact of $60,000 for LUSG and approximately about $35,000 for Confidential Group. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have student comments? Any board comments on this?
I move we approve, Dr. Baugh.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Student vote?
Aye.
And board vote, please. Thank you, board. The motion passes seven zero. Item OAI7, ratification of the memorandum of understanding with Lola Unified Supervisory Group, rearranges and new classification, Ms. Church?
President Baugh, members of the board, the MOU with the supervisory group is presented for your approval.
Thank you. Student comments? Any board comments for this?
Move we approve. Second.
All right. And student vote?
Aye.
And board vote, please. Thank you so much. Thank you, board. Seven zero. The motion passes. We go on to item AOI8, improvement of the confidential salary schedule to reflect rearrange of classifications in alignment with the district's proposal to other employee groups for 2024, 2025 school year, Ms. Church?
President Baugh, members of the board, confidential salary schedule presented for your approval.
Any student comments? Any board comments on this?
Move we approve. Second.
And student vote, please?
Aye.
Thank you. And board vote? Thank you, board. Motion passes seven zero. We have item OAI7, credential waiver application and approval, Ms. Church?
Dr. Baugh, members of the board, before you is a credential waiver application for the employees listed, and it is recommended for your approval.
Thank you. Student comments? Any board comments on this?
Move we approve. Second.
Thank you. Can we have... Student vote, please?
Aye.
Thank you. And board vote? Thank you, board. Motion passes six ayes, one nay. All right. We have public comments on reports. The public may address the board on reports. Each public speaker shall limit comments to three minutes. Please state your first and last name as you come to the podium. Thank you.
President Dr. Baugh, members of the board, Superintendent Young, Ms. Church. So, I went through the, I actually went to the presentation for the Gartner School and read the report, and so I'm kind of confused. The presentation talked about it being a K8. The document given here talks about this school being K6. At least, that's the title of it. Then, throughout the document, it says it could be a K8. So, I guess my question is, have we decided what grade levels this school will cover? I, for one, am not a fan of K8 schools for several reasons. My son went to a K8 school, and I, I'm sorry, and I teach middle school. I don't want middle school to trouble kids. I'm just gonna tell you that. So, I just was wondering if there has been a decision on this campus as to what grades it's going to cover, because it's a little bit confusing looking at the document and after going to the presentation and everything else. So, thank you.
Thank you. Since that is a question, I'm gonna request for a clarification. Ms. Yeung?
Yeah, Dr. Baugh, members of the board, to that question, this is a school that is intended to be a TK6 school and even potentially preschool, but wanting to be able to react if necessary to increase, take on middle school, it could down the road. But as we look at the initial phases, phases one and two, which are the bulk of what we're doing, it is really another elementary school. But if necessary, down the road, it could then take on additional middle school students. But Samuel M. Gantner is going to be a TK6 school.
Thank you. We do have a report for this specific question related, and continuing, I'm gonna come down to it. Did you wanna make a comment on it?
Yeah, we put in cards.
Oh, that's coming up?
Oh, okay.
It's a comment on the report.
It is a comment on the report.
So, we currently are on public comments on reports. So, if you'd like to speak to the reports, please do come up. Did you also wanna keep your card in public comments later on?
Maybe. Was it plenty to?
It's right in there.
Good evening. Susan Everly. I wanted to talk about the Gantner report, but I'm obviously a little bit confused. First of all, I wanna say how exciting it is that we are building a new school. When you build a new school, it gives us the opportunity to make it extraordinary. Or when we remodel a school, it gives us the opportunity to make them extraordinary. And so, what I'm going to say is that maybe this school should be looking to something that's a little bit more in the future, giving opportunities for students. And now that I know it's a K6, but I was really talking about K8. But I do think that it's really important when, the reason I got started in science limby was because 30 years ago, my children were in it, and I just continued because somebody needed to do that. And I think that it's valuable to have that program. And my husband's cousin had children or grandchildren in school in San Jose, and they had extra rooms for things like projects and art and maybe even science. So, I'm not sure that this is a part of it, but I was cleaning out my huge quantity of binders and came across, again, the Science Safety Handbook for California Science Rooms. And of course, the most interesting thing in there was that you had a form that once the 25th student came in, you were to send them back, because you know, at high school, it's always supposed to be 24. And middle school, it's always supposed to be maximum 28, or now 27. So, I'm not sure that my comments were totally appropriate, but I do think that because it's elementary school, it's okay to put in a science room or project room or even an art room, because our students need that, and it's looking to the future. It's something that we can do that would help our kids flourish. And maybe if we used it as a role model, we could add it to the other schools. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Ron Everly, Lodi. Thank you for everything you do, board and staff. It's good to see you. Again, my comments were also about Gantner School. I too thought that it was actually going to be a pre-K8 school, and I really do like the idea of K8 if, and only if, that seven and eight are planned well, because it is a different educational program, as you know. Wouldn't 27 be awesome in your classroom? That would be good. Yes, my family has a history of middle school teaching. I did wanna make a couple of observations. Is that if we're planning a school, we do need to plan for growth and build for growth. The population will increase, no matter what anybody says. It's going to increase, because Lodi's population is going to increase during the lifespan of that school. And my point is, is don't build it for what you have now. Build it for what's coming down the road. At the community information meeting, there were a lot of comments, and a lot of them were really good. I really loved listening to some of the comments. One of them was, I put in, of course, it was a good one, was shade structures. It says right outside the multipurpose room, this is for outside dining. Do it now. Get the shade structures in, so you don't have to go back later. Do it right the first time. Give those kids a break out of the sun. And it's also for outdoor learning, it's nice to have a place where they can go where they're outside and they're still in the shade. It does get warm here, by the way. Plan for flexibility and expansion, because it's just flat gonna happen. And some of the other comments were good about if you've got a multi- And some of the other comments were good about, if you've got a multipurpose room, and this is kind of a contention of mine too, this multipurpose rooms need to be large enough so that you can fit your population. If it's up to sixth grade, it's six fifty, but if you do middle school, it's eight fifty. So you better make your multipurpose room ready for eight fifty now, because we know you're not going to go back and remodel a multipurpose room. I think we're all aware enough to know that that's just not going to happen, because your space gets hamstringed and you just can't build it. So build it for the future, don't build to the minimum, build for what's right and vision for the future. That's my observation, and I'm real excited about the fact that we are honoring Mr. Gantner, just like Mr. Niedel. That school was named after a very similar situation. And during the presentations, they were talking about, you know, how can we draw that in to let kids know about service and commitment and sacrifice for our country? Thank you.
Good evening, I'll keep... My name is Mary Geida, I'm a music teacher in the district. I wanted to keep this comment really short. As I was reviewing the plans, I noticed there's not a music room. And whether it's going to be including middle school or not, we want to continue to have these thriving middle school programs. To K is a powerhouse, because we have these feeder programs, so you need to make sure you have guaranteed space for every teacher that's going to be on that site, PE, music, specialist, SEC, calculus, everything. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have a report on Samuel M. Gantner Elementary School Educational Specifications.
We do, Dr. Ball, but do you mind if we take a moment to set up the table so our co-presenters? Ready?
Hi, good evening, President Ball, members of the Board, Superintendent Young. This evening I am joined by Mrs. Wise and the Board's architects, Mr. Grau who's hiding behind, and Ms. Wong, to present the educational specifications, EDSpecs, for the new Samuel M. Gantner School. Unfortunately, Mr. Patty, he was unable to be with us tonight, but we had planned. Michael, can you open the PDF? The presentation PDF, please? Thank you. Next slide. Okay. Well before a contractor sets foot on site, whether it's for a modernization, a new classroom building, or an entirely new school, a facilities project undergoes extensive planning. The process spans many months, sometimes years, and involves stakeholder engagement, site evaluation, environmental reviews, plan development, and approvals from the Division of State Architects. These steps lay the foundation or groundwork for putting a project out to bid and then allowing the Board to award a construction contract. An essential early step in a new school project is the development of the educational specification, which a Board must approve and then submit to the California Department of Education, in part as the district will be seeking state matching funds on this project. EDSpecs communicate what educators need for a facility to support the academic programs. They serve as a bridge between the educational goals and the school design, guiding our architects as they design spaces to meet the program needs. And upon the conclusion of our presentation tonight, we will be seeking Board feedback to the specifications, and then, so we can prepare those to bring back for final approval. The education specifications presented today reflect a collaboration across multiple district departments, the Board's architect team, community forum, that included input from parents, neighbors, business leaders, teachers, and staff. And we'd also like to especially thank our Larson Stars, who are our student contributors, whose input is highlighted on the boards directly behind me. And as we continue through this process and move into more refined and defined detailed plans, we will be engaging additional stakeholders. Understanding kind of how we develop the EDSpecs, we'd like to share some highlights of the specifications. So first of all, the project site is an eleven-and-a-half acre property that the district currently owns, it's on the west side of Lodi, it's adjacent to Grace Point Church, right at the corner of Vine and Westlake, Westgate, sorry. The site is being designed to accommodate the building in phases, particularly due to funding constraints. And the initial phase will provide a full site functionality to accommodate up to four-hundred-and-fifty students. The complete TK6 site build-out will accommodate a total of six-hundred-and-fifty students. And as mentioned earlier this evening, the plans will include an option to include seven and eight, and that would accommodate a total of eight-hundred-and-fifty students. And as the team is looking to complete these designs, we're looking at it through a lens of being able to modify the designs for potential use in our, on our Westlake property to the west of Silva, as that area continues to develop as well. And it is now my pleasure to introduce Desiree Wise, your Facility and Maintenance Supervisor, for her debut presentation to the Board, and she will continue with some additional specifications that can be found in the report.
Good evening, Dr. Ball and President Superintendent Young. Continuing on from what Ms. Edith, Ms. Holbert started discussing is some key concepts regarding our facility design. On the screen, there are several different ones listed, but I will just expand and touch on a few. The first one being flexibility. Our classrooms and common areas are designed to change as teaching practices and technologies evolve, ensuring long-term value. Classrooms will provide flexibility to work more collaboratively. Technology. Infrastructure is designed to support current and future tech needs, ensuring equitable access and readiness for digital learning. Safety and security. Design elements support layered safety, such as clear lines of sight, controlled entry, and secure outdoor areas. Connection. Outdoor learning areas, community use spaces, and welcoming entrances help integrate schools with its broader surroundings. Next slide. One of the key design elements are classroom clusters. Here are a couple of examples for you. Classroom clusters are a strategic shift from isolated classrooms. It's more, they're more connected, collaborative learning communities, designed to enhance instruction, build relationships, and improve outcomes. This particular model, I would like to point out, it does also include our SDC classes with their appropriate grade level cluster. It ensures students with specialized instructional needs, they are integrated into the academic environment. Next slide. Just like Ms. Holbert mentioned, EDSpecs are planning documents defining the space design and functional requirements for a school facility, based on educational programs it will support. Here, under the general area, are seven bullet points that are just a brief sample of what's included in the EDSpecs. I won't go over all of them, you're more than welcome to read through them, and, like I said, it's just a sample of what's included in the EDSpecs. Collaboration space. They are shared flexible areas that are designed to support student-centered learning, interdisciplinary learning, peer tutoring, and even teacher collaboration. And Mr. Heberly spoke on outdoor learning, and rather than treating outdoor areas as separate or secondary, we're integrating them into building, we're integrating them into the building design through direct access, views, and covered areas. And really ultimately, our design elements really will work together to create a school environment that reflects our educational values and sets everyone up for success now and in the future.
And now, we are open for questions, feedback, and we do, like I said, we have the Board's architects here, who can answer any detailed questions that you may have.
I have one question. I did notice that you only had one SDC class in each of those pods, and it is really challenging having SDC children have to share grades. Is that the model that you intend to have?
As it is set up right now, yes. There is one SDC amongst each of the different grade clusters.
And I would just further answer that with, knowing we want to ensure that as we are doing it at other sites, that the experience for an SDC student from beginning to end has that similarity of being on a campus, instead of moving to different places, that is a challenge with single grade level, and that's where some of that flexibility have, you know, happens with maybe like a K1 or a K12, depends on the number of students. But ultimately, the idea is give the experience to all our kids at that school site, that whole continuum up through sixth grade.
Looking at our numbers for the next, I mean, the projections with the increase in children with autism and our IEPs, have you guys considered that we actually might need to manage cluster?
No, we have not looked at it that way.
Do we have any other Board comments? Go ahead.
I would just like to make sure that we are looking into the comments from Ms. Geida and the Heberlys about, you know me, I'm going to say science immediately, but with music and I would be safe to say an art class space where we look at this, or even a steam area, that would be hugely beneficial when we've got a chance to do something great. Let's make it great.
One quick question, I see there's TK, but is there any idea about putting preschool in there too?
Yes.
My quick question is the outdoor learning, do we have, we don't have dimensions on that yet, of how many students it would hold, is that, could that hold multiple classes at one time?
The idea is to incorporate the outdoor learning right outside of the classrooms and provide shade cover to where it's easy to go in and out of the classroom for the outdoor experience and the indoor experience. So tying that outdoor experience to all classrooms.
So for instance, say we have a crazy idea, we have an air conditioner that goes out, it's one-hundred-and-ten in a classroom. Is it possible to have more than one classroom out in that outdoor learning area, to be able to do some form of a classroom setting without having to send students all over being there?
Yes, it would be, it would be multiple areas, so all of the classrooms, an area in front of the classrooms. There's a, there's a couple of examples on our design boards here that really give you the idea of what that looks like, and also collaboration space if there happen to be outside, and that really is, one of the key design elements is providing students both in-classroom and outdoor experience.
And I didn't notice anywhere unless I missed it, when we talk about a music room or an art room, I love those ideas. To me, those are very basic, they should be in every school. Do we have any kind of out-of-the-box type spaces that maybe we don't available yet, but we build them?
You know, we were just in a further planning meeting yesterday, and we were discussing the music room, and we were discussing the maker space areas, and so those are on the radar, yes.
Okay, thank you.
We do have an auditorium in there.
A multipurpose room, yes.
Now, is eleven-and-a-half acres large enough for this elementary school?
For an elementary school, yes. Becomes tight for a K8, but large enough for an elementary, yes.
I couldn't find in the report where you guys have a mother's room, so for nursing mothers.
We do have a lactation room and multiple options included in these site designs that we're working on, yes.
Will they be shared spaces?
We have a couple of different ideas that we're looking at, we haven't fully vetted, but there is square footage that's being designated for that, yes.
Quick question about this. I did not see the cluster configuration before, and I really appreciate this. We sat through our committee when we talked about the initial planning. Why are we limiting ourselves to four classrooms per grade?
Four classrooms?
Three, I'm sorry, there's one, three, three each.
Well, really, aside from the preschool to kindergarten classrooms, all of the rest of the classrooms are flexible spaces and can be used for whatever grade appropriate. We are constrained by the size of the property. Unfortunately, there are budget constraints that we're working with, so those are the classrooms that we feel at this time we can prepare to successfully complete with the resources we have.
So this is just a suggestion, it's for the planning committee to look further. Can we have four classrooms each from first grade to sixth grade? And that gives us an extra SDC room if needed, and it gives us music room if needed. Of course, we want it designated as well, but if we don't fill up those classrooms with kids, which I'm pretty sure we will, just like Larson is busting at its being right now. So can we just, I know budgets are constrained, nobody complained about money, we're spending it, let's spend it.
Yep.
Come on, April, we're just talking about one, two, three, four, five, six extra classrooms.
Jennifer, how much is that? No, just kidding. We can definitely look at the Board's desires, include multiple classrooms.
Board hasn't spoken, I have, I believe everybody else has. This is just a suggestion, but really appreciate the time and effort put into this, thank you. Yes, thank you so much. Do we have anything else on the same report to continue?
Nope, that's it. You don't have one question for our architects?
Add the full classroom.
What do you ask? What type of HVAC design do they think about for how much CFMs in each classroom?
We're a little preliminary for that, probably that question right now, but...
How many looms of light? But we'll get there. All right, we'll save it for the next time.
Thank you, appreciate your time and effort again, thanks. We are moving on to our Board Advisory Committee reports. Does any Board member have an advisory committee report to present? Thank you. We are moving on to comments from the public. I was going through it, I want to say we have one, two... We have eleven slips here to consider. Yeah, counting those, it's eleven. So either we can, if everybody does want to speak, I can reduce two minutes, or if you want to keep three minutes, we'll just go as they came, and then there will be some people who won't get a chance to speak, okay? Board, is it okay for me to make it down to two minutes, so more people can get a chance to speak?
That'll be fine.
Okay, well, thank you, and we'll set the timer to two minutes then, please. A twenty-minute time period is allocated for the public to address the Board on matters not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to two minutes for this meeting. If there are numerous speakers, we will obviously limit the time like we just did. To share materials with the Board, please provide them to the staff for distribution. To share materials with the board, please provide them to the staff for distribution. Due to restrictions under the California Brown Act, the board cannot engage in discussion regarding public comments. Please state your first and last name as you approach the podium. Thank you. Kelly Hanson?
Hi, Kelly Hanson. I'm commentary, screw up. Welcome, Dr. Ball. Thank you for always running a beautiful meeting. Board members, thank you for being here. Dr. Young? Okay. And I just want to say, Lexi, you girls always did a great job and really appreciate it. You made teachers proud. Anyway, only have a short time. I just want to talk about the new calendar that you put out. Very little teacher input with that. And one of the things that is causing most of the discussion among elementary teachers is that our first meeting face to face with parents is in November, right before Thanksgiving. It's a difficult time. There's been so much time that's already passed. And if you, you know, I always talk about how important relationship is. And so talking with your, with your parents ahead of time before problems develop is critical. So it'd be nice if after this year, we do this kind of as a pilot. And then next year, ask the teachers, how did it go with the, having the, the the meetings with the parents transferred to November rather than at the end of September? Okay, so please, please keep that in mind. Because I think that's just too long to go without getting to look at your parents, look them in the eye and say, I love your child, but. So please think about that. And then what you're being passed out is the letter that we came up with regarding some of the issues we had with the statement about the bargaining. So please take a good look at that. We appreciate you very much. Thank you. Susan Heberly?
Can I give my ex my two minutes?
Has to be salacious.
Did I take her two minutes?
Yes.
Good evening, Ron Heberly. I didn't get to say everything. I wanted, so I'm gonna say it real fast this time. One of the comments I heard was the multipurpose room. It's great for K6, but if you do a K8, it's not big enough. Exactly what I'm talking about. If you also look at your paperwork, it's not large enough for a regulation sized basketball. And we've already gone down this road once before and we had to stop the program at the development or at the planning stage and say, listen, if you're gonna put in a secondary gym or a facility able to have basketball or volleyball, make it big enough so that it's regulation and that we always talk about, let's provide positive activities for the children in our community. And no matter what anybody thinks, schools are community centers. And it just gives everybody some flexible, let's say we start a intramural kind of basketball or volleyball or something. Now we have a facility that can handle that instead of something, again, here we are trying to minimize space and trying to squeeze everything in. I think I know how much money is in the developer fees. And I'm kind of concerned about saying that there's not enough money, of course. There's always a need for more. However, when you're doing the planning for something that's gonna last decades and decades and decades, plan it right the first time. And when they were talking about music, it did come up at the community forum that we should have a space instead of like at Lodi Middle, I always want to call it senior, at Lodi Middle that, you know, they're on the stage with a curtain. Well, that doesn't help either, you know, somebody outside or inside. So again, planning is important and I think if anyone knows me, I'm kind of a facilities guy. So if you don't mind, let us all know when the meetings are so we can maybe be able to fly in the wall and listen. Thank you.
Keith Russell?
Good evening, Dr. Ball, Superintendent Young, members of the board. My name is Keith Russell. I teach computer science and robotics at Lodi High. A proud parent of a student of Vinewood and another one soon to be. I'm here today to follow up about a concern that previously raised at the February 4th board meeting regarding the increase of class sizes associated with moving to a sudden period day. At that meeting, Dr. assured the board and the public that class sizes would not be increasing due to this change. Well, I'm afraid they have. At Lodi High, class sizes are so large that we have had to close sections of low enrollment electives such as AP Biology and AP Chemistry. This directly contradicts the goal of increasing opportunities for students. Please provide us with enough staff to run these courses and director and negotiating team to revise our contract language so we don't run into the same issue year after year.
Bill Yen?
I wanted to quickly share with you that, some cool things that, thank you, Mrs. Alexander, for answering the emails. Appreciate that so much. Thank you for looking at the documents that we have. And wanted to share with you about our, our music teacher, Ms. Karen Watkins, who is new to us and she chose our school and she's amazing. And because she was there, we had an amazing talent show. And at that talent show, one of the students from my classes, sort of classes, won third place. Which was amazing. And another one of the students who, I know his name, SDC teacher shouldn't know his name, if you get what I'm talking about. He found his space. He won the whole thing for primary. It was amazing that what art can do in our schools. Also, Art at McNair got to hear Raphael sing because our whole school walked over to McNair and attended the play that they had there. And that includes my classes because Mrs. Horton really believes in inclusion and we worked and we had the time to work on how we were gonna walk over there. It was beautiful. Was, not everybody got to go, but we worked on going because you have three credentialed SDC teachers at that site. One who's an intern, we're helping her out and she's doing a good job. And so they all went. And the Addams Family was a little more active, a little more noisy than normal, but they acted through it and they did a great job. The McNair students and our students loved everybody, admitted. And this is the coolest part. When they began singing, our students went style. And so I, McNair to do an opera next year, we will see. But it happened because we had teachers in that site. It was hard. It was a hard day. I'm wearing an LEA shirt that has a hole in it. And it was, I'm not by it that way. My students rearranged it. But it happened because we had teachers. I know, we did a hard thing for our students. Please do the hard work and do not accept that it is hard to find special ed teachers. Do everything you can so that Lodi Unified is the place that special ed teachers want to be at.
Can we have your person last name? Can we have your person last name?
That's all right.
We know your billiards, but can you say that on the microphone?
Oh, sorry. Rushing for two minutes. Billy, it's parent and teacher. Thank you.
Mary Gaeta. Thank you for spelling it out.
I know it's a weird Italian name. Good evening, President, Dr. Ball, members of the board, and Superintendent Mr. Young. My name is Mary Gaeta and I'm the music teacher at Vinewood Elementary School. I teach music because it has always been my home. And I want every student to feel the same sense of belonging. Over 11 years across three school districts, 12 schools, countless principals in an ever-changing environment, one thing has remained constant. The joy on a student's face when they create music. I teach music because it changes lives, it sparks confidence, creativity, and connection. Music matters and so do the students who walk in my room. Through every note, every rhythm, and every young voice, I see a future taking shape and I'm honored to be part of its song. I feel incredibly fortunate to have a dedicated music classroom. It's a space where students feel safe to create, take risks, and grow. Having that consistent environment allows me to build a strong program that reaches every student at my school. I know that not every music teacher in our district has access to the same foundation and that matters. Four teachers at two schools are teaching on a cart. It might be more next year. We don't sometimes know until the day before school starts. That's what happened this year. Additionally, right now we have five open music positions across the district. In order to bring back band and street programs to our elementary school during the day, we would need to hire an additional 10 music teachers to be fully staffed. Recruiting and retaining quality educators is a challenge we're not only facing alone, but we need to do, we need to be honest about the contributing factors. Other districts often are able to offer more, whether it's in compensation, resources, or facilities. If we want to attract, attracting key passionate and qualified teachers, we have to create the conditions where we can thrive. Every student deserves access to a strong, stable music program. Every teacher deserves the space and support to build that program. We need to have a fair contract now so we can retain and recruit qualified teachers across all disciplines. Thank you.
Anselma Garcia?
Hi, Anselma Garcia. As I'm watching all these kids come in and I just think, we do great things. Our kids do great things, our people do great things, and it makes me feel so good. This is my 35th year. Kelly and I used to take kids to science camp and you sell all those candy bars and you just think you want to beat your head against the wall. And then you go over the rise and the kids see Half Moon Bay and they all go, ah! And it's worth every candy bar. And then you go up Pescador Road and there's a tree where they hang pumpkins, little pumpkins. And you tell the kids it's a pumpkin tree and they are excited for the pumpkin tree. Or you go with Jason Johnson to a college tour. To kids who have been told they're never going to college and you take them to a place where they're gonna see a college, whether it's San Diego with Jackie or the Pacific Northwest. We took kids to a school of 1,000 and we took them to U-Dub. It's like 45,000, 50,000 people. Where Kyle lost his wallet and we found it. But, and the reason why I'm thinking about it is because tonight we had kids, we celebrated kids who won things, but sometimes it's the opportunity. And so I just wanted to say some kids' names who didn't win, but they had an opportunity because someone took time to take care of them. So at John Mear with Jackie Frye, Grayson, Rochelle, Elizabeth, Manette, Lily, Leila, teacher's kid, Julia, Armani. At Claremont with Grace Lynn Sharon Dino, who was in preschool with my daughter and teaches TK and worked with kids for the invention convention during her lunch. All these teachers do this out of their contract time. Jocelyn, Nikell, Gloria, it's the first time Claremont's participated. That's pretty awesome. Elkhorn, Mazan Roland with Samantha McCoy. And then the kids with Rachel Reed, you met Reed with Rachel Gregor. And then Merit Awards, Fern, Gwendolyn, and Hisk with Kim Nichol, went to OP with her. And then Alyssa who's going, Jackie had three kids go last year to the national convention. She's got one girl going this year. And guess what they need? They need some funds. So if you could do that, that would be great because we give kids opportunity, whether they win or lose, they have an experience that will last them a lifetime because of the people out here and the people that were here earlier who's given their time to do that and I thank you for that. Thank you.
Ashley Daniel?
Hi, my name is Ashley Daniel. Good evening, Dr. Ball, members of the board, President, Superintendent Neil Young. My name is Ashley Daniel. I teach at Menlo Silva. I just wanted to tell you to look at those papers that my colleagues have passed out. Also, I wanted to say the last time I spoke here was two years ago and I brought a rock. I used to teach at Parkland. Some of you might remember. I just wanted to let you know I represent the younger, multicultural teachers in Lodi. And there's not very many of us here. And last, last month, I got in a car accident. And therefore my car was totaled and I had to buy a new car. And I just want to tell you, I'm struggling to make it to work. I live in Elk Grove. Struggling to make it to work. I'm struggling to pay my rent. I am I'm eating a couple noodles sometimes and I can't DoorDash like other people do. And so I just wanted to say that I can't live like the other teachers here because I'm single, I don't have a second work, I don't have a second person to help me pay my rent. And it's hard, it's hard to be a single teacher who, who is passionate about their students, who wants to build a community, who taught at Title I high-risk schools. And now I'm teaching at Menlo Silva, which is still a big school. There's still students who I represent. And I just want to let you know that we need to solve this contract thing because there are people like me, young teachers, older teachers, who are, who are still trying to make it paycheck to paycheck. And it's hard. It's very hard. So yeah, thank you for your time.
Matt Upton?
Dr. Ball and Board and Superintendent Young, thank you for giving me this opportunity to be here in front of you. My name is Matt Upton. Some people refer to me as their CEO, their Chief Encouragement Officer. And I've been part of the district now. My kids came in when they were in the sixth, fifth and sixth grade. One of them has come through from the first grade on. And now I'm starting over again with my grandkids. I refer to them as my VPs because the vice president's gonna take over when I'm gone. And I wanted us to think about four things that we are as a district. Every time I look at Lodi, this is what I think about. The first characteristic of our district is that we locate love, our love for students. It's all about students. Everything that we do is about students. And that love does something really remarkable in our district. It opens up opportunities for our students. And it grants them light for the third thing. It grants them light to find direction in their lives. One of my students, one of my kids is now a teacher in another district. And she found that light here through the opportunity of the love that each of you and every one of these teachers give and grant to everybody. We saw that tonight. And the fourth thing is that when we locate our love for students and we center on that on a regular basis, it opens up these opportunities for students and grants them the light and direction which gives them the investment that they need to change and enhance the community and the county and the state and the country that we live in. And so I wanted to say that to you in a sense, just to commend you and commend these people behind me and to remind us that we have a pretty awesome district. And every once in a while we hear these moans and groans, but I want you to know, as a dad and as a granddad, I commend you. And I applaud you for all the work that you're doing. Thank you for this opportunity.
Victor Moore?
President, Madam Vice President, Superintendent Yonkin. I had the choice of going to this board meeting today or Elk Grove. So I'm glad I came here today. So it's been a very special evening. You know, I've been in kind of this vendor role for this year and I'm not really the sales guy, but I am the sales guy because there's nobody else who can do it. They're smarter than I and they're engineers. So we have a couple of products and it's been interesting because it's like I said, it's the first time I'm trying to figure out object codes and budgets and, you know, who to talk to. But, and, and changing our, our products to meet schools' needs and to meet students' needs. And one of the things that we've realized is we have something that I think can really help to reduce. we have something that I think can really help to reduce chronic absenteeism. And it was uh, you know, fortuitous that uh, the superintendent was talking about the great reduction that has happened from thirty-eight down to twenty-two. But twenty-two percent is still twenty-two percent really too many. And will, will what we have solve the entire problem? No, but it will uh, be a great help. And um, uh, if you think about it, just from the standpoint of thinking about what the students got to experience here today. Uh, you have about seven thousand students who don't get to experience that. And in the sense of equity, but just in the sense of wanting everyone in the community to feel a part of the community and to experience the love that was just talked about. I would love the opportunity to, to talk more about how to uh, reduce chronic absenteeism and uh, open up doors and create incentives for students who don't really necessarily have that love of learning to begin to generate that love of learning by just showing up. That's the first step. Thank you very much.
Mira Laurie.
Hello, Doc, President Dr. Wall. Board members and I guess Superintendent, you stepped out. While I love that we're looking at a new site for um, the younger children of Lodi. Um, I, I'm an RSP teacher at Bear Creek. We have been doubled up in one classroom for, I don't even know how long. It's been like that since I came on board. And because of the seven-period extension, we are now doubling up um, some of our core classes. So if we can maybe look at what we can do for our high schools and where we might need more space, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Last and most of these, Ron Timberlake.
I think you're sick of hearing me.
Absolutely not.
Thank you, very kind.
Did you want to hear that? Okay, thank you. Well, thank you all for taking time for your comments. Um, we are moving on to comments for employee group representatives. The representatives from each employee group have five minutes to comment on the non-agendized items.
Do I have someone to ban?
Yes, okay, thank you, sorry. Hi, Lisa Lennon Wilkins, Lodi Education Association. There are several of you here who are former teachers, so admit it, this has all happened. One of your students has come up and called you either mom or dad, right? Probably left in, in secondary with Mr. Porter, Mr. Stroh. Um, but it's, it happens, right? So. Well, I will tell you, in middle school, though, most of the time they say, I am glad you're not my mom, because I was pretty strict, but anyway. So in edcode, teachers are considered in loco parentis, in place of parents, when students are in school. It's legal, it's actually in some civil code as well. Um, teachers are expected to make sure that our students receive their basic needs while also ensuring their safety and making sure they learn. So it's very fitting that this year, uh, we have, when teacher appreciation weekends, we also celebrate Mother's Day. Teachers actually call our students "our kids", and we form some of the same bond with them as we do with our biological children. We follow our students throughout their educational journey. Teachers celebrate when our former students achieve milestones like promotions and graduations. And we suffer when those same students experience setbacks. So as the school year ends, teachers are celebrating the promotions and graduations of our students, both current and past. We appreciate, appreciate the graduation locks and visits, visits from our former charges as they move towards the next chapter. We also appreciate hearing from our students as they venture into the world to get jobs, get married, and start families. And just to let you know, I actually went to a wedding of a former student of mine last weekend. It made me feel very old. I know that some of our students are now teaching kids of their former students. So I want to let our former students know that your teachers still think about you and you, we hope that you remember us. After all, your, your teachers are in loco parentis.
President Val, members of the board, Superintendent Young, I'd like to thank you for passing our tentative agreement and the four MOUs that came upon you. I'd also like to comment that uh, they brought up on, Mrs. Clark and the team brought up chat challenges that you're going to have in the future for this upcoming school year. I'd like to report that we would like to work with you to, to uh, come to an agreement that's going to fix your problem. And all the kids can get to school and learn and be good students. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. We are moving on to comments from board members. Start with Mr. Porter.
Uh, just a couple of things. First of all, was the young lady, did her comments earlier, Dr. Wall, was that correct? She was earlier than you. Thank you for doing that. To do a seven-minute mile, I know I couldn't do any of my best today. And for her to go up there and present the way that she did, it was inspirational for me. I hope that we can rectify that because the seven-minute mile is tough. And uh, the other issues, of course, you brought up are, are just tragic, very annoying. So I would hope that our administrative staff are, are working in that arena. Mr. Young, thank you for bringing the statistics of absenteeism. I added my notes to bring it up during my comments. Twenty-two percent is better than thirty-eight, but twenty percent still is one in five. And that's not good enough. We need to do better, but we are doing better. We've improved, and that's the key thing. It's okay to be open with your data and show what you got, and we need to keep improving. So I applaud you for that. And the last thing was the, all the kids that came up. But what struck me was somebody that I had worked with, I really don't know that well, no word passing, but I knew that she was an incredible teacher and just a passionate, and that's Ms. Freeman, who does Ag and Toke. I mean, what a display. And how those kids do, and how she goes out and gets things done and grants and so forth. That just shows you, this is Educated Week, and I consider myself a teacher, and I always will be, that um, what one person can do to so many students' lives, one teacher, the impact that they have. Administrators, maybe counselors, one teacher, just getting out there, pushing kids and getting them forward, recognizing their potential and seeing what they can do. I mean, that was just incredible. And then, of course, the men with the Special Olympics. That was, I've, I've been to one of those a couple of years ago, Mr. Arrington invited me. I need to go to the fifteenth, is that correct? Uh, so uh, it, it's a wonderful thing, to see the teachers doing these things for our students. It just makes me feel very proud of the profession that I have for thirty-eight years. And so uh, it was great, and kudos to Ms. Freeman, that is very important. So those are my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. This is Emma, do you have any comments?
I do, um, no one else has comments?
We're just going up.
Oh, oh, we're jumping? Oh, okay, that's why I was like really shocked, I was like, oh, bye-bye. All right. Well, I am actually really excited. We just came out of April and it was Autism Awareness Month. And coming into May and having the opportunity to build a school and maybe rethink the way that we look at how we have SDC and how we integrate and create that unity. And thank you, Erin, for all that work because it is tough for those students to not feel included. Especially as they're coming to Gen N. So to all those teachers that have included Sped kids in their classroom, huge shout-out to you because they, you make a huge difference in their lives, in their, in their entire trajectory. And it's powerful to see Sped kids get that opportunity to be in Gen N and, and to also have those opportunities. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman.
A couple of quick things. I'm going to echo what Gordon said about a couple of them. Ms. Freeman, Mrs. Freeman just, she does an awesome job at Toke. I also worked with her in the back of her farm when she first took it over. It's right behind my classroom, so I would see the kids out there when they were starting to work there. And the amount of kids she has, just giving them to the different contests and everything is pretty amazing. And I know how involved she is with the kids and their families, because the families have to be involved to get, get them to a lot of the things there. And also uh, I agree about, believe it or not, I used to run. And the seven-minute mile is, that's pretty tough for a lot of people, especially if you're up running. And it just seemed, something didn't seem right there, and I don't know if it's story, but that is something that should be looked into. And she was very brave to come up and bear herself with that, so I was pretty impressed. And also uh, I went around a bunch of different schools. I can finally walk again. I went around a bunch of different schools the last week and a half or so. It was so nice to go to these elementary schools. And almost every one of the principals was bragging about the custodial staff and just how their whole staff, from teachers down, I don't want to say down two, through everybody, that they were very uh, they felt like family. And everybody's bragging about their staffs. Because when I go to the school, I want them to tell me something great about it. So I went to five or six different schools, I could break it down, but it would take a long time. And then also uh, the basketball stuff, because my sister used to be involved a lot in Special Olympics, and I'd go with her. And uh, in fact, I saw one of the coaches today at Ace Hardware. And it's, you know, great to see that it's bringing these kids out into the community and giving them a full school experience rather than just, you know, in the room. And uh, that's kind of it. I just, it was fun going to the schools, I really got a kick out of it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wall. First of all, my gosh, this is one of the best meetings I've attended. And I've been, this is my seventeenth year. All the kids, my gosh, it just, I got goosebumps with them because uh, I remember when I was teaching and coaching, at the end of the coaching area of the day, those kids would stay in my office for hours. I would have to kick them out. I said, "Go home." They didn't want to go home. So I, I understand teachers, how you feel about that when those, those students come back and report to you and, and uh, a lot of things that are positive. Very positive things with happening in the, in the Lodi Unified School District. I want to uh, also commend uh, Mr. Dawson and Ms. Peterson. I attended the musical at Bear Creek, I was treated like a king. You know, my gosh, uh, Mr. Dawson met me out in the parking lot, Ms. Peterson got me in, and said, "We got the chairs here for you." I took my wife, and my gosh, I said, I said, "Wow, what a treat. You have some great people working for you, Mr. Young." And I wanted to commend them because they're very, very good. Uh, also uh, this last week, uh, last Friday, actually, I attended the Maintenance and Operation outfit in, on eight oh eight two.
Eight eighty.
Eight eighty-nine, eight oh five, Edith. And uh, thanks, Edith, for arranging that for me. And um, I met with Mr. Patty, and we went through all that facility. The board members, if you haven't gone there, I, I advise you to do that because it's, it's an eye-opening. Everything that happens in our district comes from there. All, I mean, it's got the refrigeration, uh, auto mechanic, everything, welding. And you can't, you can't uh, talk about all those things because there are so many of them. I want to commend Edith for taking me in, thank you very much for your time there. A couple of other things, I'd like to, I'd like to see the high schools introduce pickleball. I mean, pickleball has, has been, I, I've been studying it for a bit. I know from the beginning, it's, it's a simple game and everybody can play it. Even at my age, you can play it. Susan, you'd be surprised, you'd be surprised. No, no, there's no twisting, they're ala-ha, not the twist. But anyway, my point is, I hope that they include that in the curriculum in high schools and even the elementary schools is important. That's my report. Thank you very much, Dr. Wall.
Thank you, Mr. Manlo.
I was wondering why you got the personal tour on your Mr. Young's calendar.
Preferred parking.
I wish that.
I still got your pictures, though.
I just would like to shout out again for the music in our schools. They asked me to emcee, I don't know why. We love you. You too. But it's so much fun to see former students that are in there. And I want to shout out for the Modern Rock Band concert on May fifteenth at six-thirty at Needham. Bands from Needham, Serna, Creekside, Ottesira, and Lodi Middle will be there. Seeing the students come in tonight just warms my heart. There were a few of my formers that were there that I made eye contact with. I have to give a kiss, but uh, and it made me realize that there's only going to be maybe one or two more years where that happens. And so what Ms. Wilkins said, Mr. Upton, what you said today too, resonated in, in how I feel and perceive where we're going and the direction that we're going. So teachers, please know that teacher appreciation is, we need to shorten those proclamations, and I, it's heartfelt, everything I said, even though sometimes I'm sure a bunch of people tuned out when I was saying it. So read that proclamation. Uh, Mr. Young, I just have to ask you and hope that you have thawed out from your ice bucket challenge, made me laugh, and made the fourth, all of you characters out there. Those are the kinds of things that where you can make me smile just for being and caring about our district. And when you do, it's noted and appreciated. So thank you for those of you. Dr. Horton, I don't know if I can ever look at Yoda the same way, but thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So I'll be real quick, I just wanted to say that the students were amazing. And when I see those students, I see the hours. I see the hours in the car, I see the hours by aunts, uncles, grandparents, brothers and sisters, teachers' families, takes the community. So when you see those proud little faces, you kind of sit back as a mom or a dad or someone who raised children. Because I know how many hours we sat at Heverly's, I felt like I was a tax deduction for them in Science Olympiad. And so thank you to all those parents and the unsung heroes behind and teachers, custodians that had to clean up after we got done building rockets and what have you and destroyed the gym for the multipurpose room for the hundredth time that week. Thank you to all those people that didn't need to get up here and get a clap because there's tremendous amount of people that are involved in those, young people having success. And I don't know if everybody back there saw it, but when you see them stand there and their shoulders back and their chin up, for the moment of recognition, many of them have one, one shot at that recognition for the rest of their life, and they'll talk about it when they're thirty, forty, fifty. And other kids have multiple years of recognition, so it's, it's important. Real quick in Science Olympiad, I know Heverly's would agree with me on this. What we see is medals in an event. Every, every year or every two years, they change events. So while they might have medaled in it one year, the event changed the next year. So they're not always able to build on that specific information. They add material to an event and the, and the event starts to morph into different things. And it starts, there's a theme in elementary, and it goes through middle and goes through high school. So sitting here watching them, it's exciting to see the middle schoolers and then to see what events they'll take in high school and how they fit together. So thank you to all those people that are unsung heroes that we, we didn't get to clap for today.
Thank you, board members. I'll keep it short. My heart is full. My heart is full of pride and appreciation for everybody who took care of these kids, brought them to this event even today. Takes a lot to do this. I have been a Science Olympiad mom for over eleven years. So I know how it feels like to go through all these events and all the, all the efforts. Thank goodness my kids drive now, so. But again, I wanted to show you what I got for sitting there for three hours, watching the kids do math. This is a surprise gift today, and I am so happy. Um, I can't tell you how exciting it was to watch those kids just scribble away when the math stuff came up, Mr. Manlo was there. You were jealous, but I am so happy to have this. This is my first from now on. This is what we do for our kids. This is what we do for our community. Thank you, everybody. And thank you for all the work that goes in the background that none of us really pay attention when we throw ideas that you spend more money, but we do appreciate everything you do and keeping us all in check when it comes to how much we spend. Thank you. Everybody, this was a long meeting. Thanks for your patience. Thanks for your consideration for each other. And I really appreciate all the time you spent here. Thanks.